Anything?
By publication of notice and express times and running time Democrat. And putting the same thing on the same date, Mayor Barson.
Here.
Mr. Baylor is excused. Mr. Bean.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Libery.
Here.
Mr. Quinn, just like that.
Banker five. I find the city by the United States of America. The Republic for which stands one nation under our individual liberty just after all for all. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June fifteenth. They go make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I think.
Second.
If I have any questions, comments, corrections, suggestions. Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah.
Just McDermott, yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the July bill list and the interim bill list and the quarterly budget report from the treasurer. If anyone want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
You want a second?
Second.
If we have any questions, comments, any bills, questions you want to.
Aqua.
Aqua.
The Shannon, the Aqua. Vouchers that I didn't sign a few of them.
Got it.
Did we get all the credits taken care of?
Uh, I don't know, I just, um, I don't believe so. I just paid for a hundred and forty-nine, which was the last conversation we had that was working. So I'm not sure, I know the fire hydrants is on the agenda tonight, so. You know, whatever you guys feel like you need to do with these, let me know. I just wanted to print them, so we've had them as they're ready to go when we decide to pay them.
Okay.
This would still not be paying for. Any of the ones that were.
Broken.
Yeah, it's paying for a hundred and forty-nine hydrants, I believe, out of the one seventy-eight that were being charged.
Okay.
So some are from. Last year, it'll clear up last year's and then the first and second quarter of this year. So that's what those are.
Without them, how many were there over in paste that?
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine total that weren't working, so.
Okay, ask it. Just ask from Martha.
Your favorite stuff.
Yes, um, sorry, I just said I left my glasses in the car. My advanced age. Looking for my. Letter. Joe had confirmed that the number was right at the last meeting, so. Do you? This was looking for the letter that I sent to them with the number. They know. All right. Yeah, so they increased their offer based on twenty-four hydrants. Their initial offer was eighteen, and then I checked with Joe and he said he could confirm that twenty-four were not operational for the year. So there was a twenty-eight number out there somewhere, twenty-nine, but twenty-four was the right number.
Okay. So we'll take that off the next bill, next quarter of the bill.
And they agreed to.
Yeah, so. They credited the bill originally eleven thousand five eighty-eight. Oh wait, that's Andrew Henry, excuse me. They they credit us for that amount, and I think that was my last letter, that must be.
So they revised it to fifteen four fifty-one.
Yeah, I sent yet another. Yeah, here it is. They initially gave us a credit for eleven thousand five eighty-eight forty, and then they increased it to, they increased it with an additional three thousand eight sixty-two seventy-two. So math is not my strong suit, but I calculated that out based upon the math and it makes sense, so.
And what bill, we're gonna take that off?
They already sent a copy of the bill. With the credit.
Joe, Shannon, that bill.
Yeah, okay.
It's no, it wasn't on there. Uh huh. They were just moving our total forward.
I make a copy of this.
Yeah. Even that, yeah. A credit of three, see, this was, they'd already given us the eleven thousand.
See that on the one.
And then a credit of three eight, so the current balance is ninety-nine.
Okay, and that's for this till December to March. I'll just make the couple.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, I won't pay these, I can always void them, we'll reissue them and we'll. We can do it now if you want. So let that write.
Right, right.
That's it, Paul, you have anyone? We'll leave you there. So roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Just McDermott, yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the tax collectors' tax and survey reports for June, and we're going on a second.
Second.
If we have any questions, comments on that? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Just McDermott, yes.
Police Department. Chief, you have any one to add to your written report?
Uh, but I just, I just wanted to highlight because it was, uh. I would say a busy month and, uh, just because the public doesn't get, uh, that monthly report. Uh, and I just wanted to note that we did a. Twelve sat, or excuse me, one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven calls. And twenty-nine adult arrests, hundred and fifty-five traffic summonsed. And forty-two of those some traffic sums towards trucks. And since, uh. You may read that requested that one of the trucks kind of separated and reported out in the monthly report. Uh, that was in March, so from March to June, we've, uh. Issued a hundred and sixty-two truck sums, and so we're continuing the, uh. Aggression on trying to stop that traffic right now.
I think it stops have increased, but some insight issuing the summers is is decreased.
Uh, for, for which the.
The truck summonings.
For the truck sum.
Like June, it's about one hundred and twenty trucks, but only forty-two tickets.
Um. Yes, there's been a lot more. I would say probably warnings of that.
Uh.
Uh. But. Nothing else to report on that.
My only comment on that particular issue, Chief, is, and this isn't. Your fault or anybody's fault percent. I just don't know that all the officers. And I know crimes and police, women, this and that and everything else like that, but this trucking is really a quality of life issue. That can be controlled with the police department control, and I just don't know that all of them. Really appreciate. Uh, how bad it is when you are lived twenty-five feet off the road.
Uh, I, I, I understand that, and, uh, as far as I get communicated, what I can do with that.
No, I know, I know.
The issuance of posts and whatnot, uh. So. That will continue to be conveyed.
Anything else? Thanks, you. Joe, I don't think he's coming back, right?
No, Joe can make it, the ceiling, right? The only big thing he wanted to talk about tonight was storm debris cleanup. I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, you said you agreeable.
Yeah, um, basically, um. There are residents who were affected by the storm and they want debris cleaned up and are asking if we can come and do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And.
On their properties?
On their property, right, right, right. Well, along the critics and things of that nature on their property. And, and basically after Joe had a conversation with everybody today and things of that nature. If they go to the website and fill out a report, both to the state and FEMA, I believe it is. Um. Joe can then go and clean up and bill. The potential. Money that we're going to get back for cleaning up after the storm through. Whatever program it is that is going to be, the only thing is, my question was, what do you got to wait for all to come in? And Joe really wants to start that now.
Right.
You know, he, he doesn't want to wait for a month, but they are going to have to. Go to the website, and I guess if they fill that out right away, he'll get copyright law.
Mm-hmm.
And he can go and clean it all up. Cause he, he wants everybody to follow that because he's afraid that we'll end up cleaning up a lot more than we should be cleaning up.
So we, so we don't need to make any motion?
No, we don't need to make any motion, that was just what he wanted to do and. And he wants to get started on it right away, but the residents are going to need to know that, uh, they have to go to the websites to.
Right.
Fill it out and, and, and say that I had storm damages, that and everything else, that.
Right.
Joe took care of the rest.
Joe did provide an OEM report on that, uh, to me, and I didn't know if you wanted that right now or later.
I think. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, we're talking about it now, Chief, you can guide it close to you, sure.
Uh. So I'm just gonna read his, uh, his letter, which was, uh. For me, I don't know if you all have that letter that he had, uh, January, but. As the date of the report, public assessment of township properties, which include streets, buildings, parks, playgrounds, stormwater and sewer infrastructure. Debris removal and emergency protective measures. Uh, the D P W continues to make repairs to imminent hazard that would cause injury to the public. The more significant infrastructure damage that left on. On July sixth, the product company had twelve firefighters and two support personnel. For public safety during the height of the flood, followed by pumping basements or checking faults of water in basement at twenty, uh. Twenty-eight residual residential home. The operation period was from five forty-five AM to six forty-five PM thirteen hours. And. Committee men can't address for a report on how this affected our building. And the flooding was in the main parking lot. Within ten feet, but coming into the fire station bay doors and at the police station. It was inches from entering the outside entrance of our stairway, it actually did go down our stairway. It didn't come in the building and, uh, he continues to. Uh. Since two thousand and fifteen, when they first, township first developed the wide. Hazard mitigation plan, he has had a high priority and we look getting the park from police station as well as emergency operations center. The critical infrastructure should not be within the flooding in high hazard prone area. The estimate of damages was, uh, twenty-one single-family homes, three multifamily homes. Out of all that, there was one minor to a single-family house which fell. I, he considers a structural, everything else was, uh, basically pumping out basements, uh, not considered a minor or, or, or major. Incident, uh, of the single-family houses so far, the estimated total loss is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Of the multifamily units, twenty thousand. Bringing a total of a hundred and forty-five thousand thus far, that keeps, uh, increasing. As Paul said, the site is, uh, he asked me to put it on the police Facebook. So it's basically a hyperlink for the people can go on and click there and then submit their claim and then it. Connected to the county, so this, uh, report that. Uh, OEM fills out. It links it right to that and will, uh, accumulate that, uh, number. Uh, for debris removal for the public sector. Two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars for emergency protective measures, five thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars for road systems. Fifty-nine thousand for water control facilities, fifty-five hundred. And for other parks and recreation, two thousand, with a total public sector damage of seventy-four thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And a total between the private and public is two hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So that's just from what Joe visually saw, that's not from what people reported, so. Uh, you know, it's, it's fortunate that he's, uh, it's on the fire department sees that stuff, uh, himself, so he's able to keep track of it. And, uh. Towards the parks, he said that, that, uh, mulch that they just put out on this park here. Uh, quite a bit of that washed away and that was just done. Um, the path that leads to the basketball court, that was, uh, pretty washed out, that has to be redone. The basketball court continues to get the overflow from the field, so he's probably washing that off, uh, twice already in recent storms. And, uh, our water control facility had some, uh, had the damage to the driveway, why not, so. That is it, if there are any questions.
Can that link that you spoke about, can we get that on our website?
It's on there.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, Chief, I talked to Joe earlier when the congressmen's, uh, people were here. Uh, do you have an update for the rest of the people in committee on the building?
Oh, on the new building?
New building, yeah.
Uh, all I have is that, uh, Joe had advised me that spoke with the county. The problem with the entrance of the driveway, we're gonna conform to whatever they want, which I think has been the case all along, whatever they want to get this moving. And the whole issue with the traffic and how it's gonna be affected. He said that they are going to, um. Issue a letter saying that everything's gonna be good with that, the, the county themselves. So he said that he expects it to be done, uh, and ready to go out to bid next fall.
Yeah, he did say obviously, yeah.
So, uh, you know, hopefully we can, uh, finally get that done.
And we stressed to the congressman's liaison here, how important it is to move up the street because maybe the next storm. You're not gonna have a department downstairs on up the indoor swing.
Yeah.
You know, so.
We're fortunate that the, uh, that the D P W can, uh, come down and take care of problems.
Right, right. And, uh, I mentioned about my hometown, Rowan and Borough, receiving a large sum. That congressman paying, enabled the, that funding. The building they purchased for one point seven million and they got like two point seven million. In the grant from the, so she mentioned, I forget what grant it was, but she's gonna work with us. On, uh, the next round, hopefully.
That'd be great, all because, uh, the grants I looked at are the same ones that Joe looked at, which we couldn't qualify for.
Yeah, I think this one was tied with the bipartisan infrastructure bill and, you know, who knows when the next one. It's gonna come up, so. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. That's all I have.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, E P W's in there. Uh, do you have any you want to add to your research or?
I had two quick things to add, just, uh, we're gonna hold our first community day meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth at five PM, so I know we're not all the. From DC, cannot come to the tenth. Um, and I've realized that our PACE three-year contract is up at the end of the year, so if, if you guys are so inclined, I think it would be important this year to. Go up for a P M R again and see if we can save some money, we did have a, you know, pretty significant increase last year. Um, we do have to submit a ninety-day notice to our current agent with PACE, so if you guys authorize me to do that, I can get that out.
Good.
That's it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the township administrator to solicit. A proposal for the joint for next year. Second, any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yeah.
Lisa, Costa's letter, was that included in your course comments?
It is even, you know, it is because I had already put it in, uh, the packets, but he did ask that it be withdrawn.
Oh, he did?
Because he, he received some information from Paul and then my email to him with our code, and he wanted to look into it further.
Okay. So, uh, they did the community there. What day?
December, uh, thirty-third.
Uh, nine twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have anything on the court reported or A C O report? For the zoning report? Here, remember, okay, let's look up for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the police department report, the department policy board's report, township first report, zoning code report, and report, court report, the A C O report.
I'll make the most.
Second, I mean, no question. Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Barson.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott, yes.
Committee, please, Lily, you have anything? Bill?
Uh, the school board, uh, really not much going on, you know, it's a lull. You know, so I didn't bring up the topic of the lease agreement for the fields. And they're pretty much on board with it, so I guess, you want to go for something?
Mike, you need a couple things for that lease agreement yet?
Just the, yeah, the description, we just need the property description.
Okay.
The package, so we drafted the lease agreement, so.
Okay. You can help with any.
Yep.
Okay. Paul?
Um, the zoning report kind of covered everything that's going on, there's a variety of different things that are, he's moving forward with and. Particularly in the neighborhood up the road, uh, what we call the heights, there's a couple of issues up there. And I just, the squad is still plugging along about, uh, doing the paperwork and. Their bylaws have been rewritten, the SOPs are in the process of to accommodate state of New Jersey for licensing of the ambulances. A slow process, but it's moving forward. Uh, the relationship that we've struck up with Pattonburg, uh, for the most part seems to be working. Uh, we still don't have one of their rigs stationed here in town, but it's not that far off. Uh, just as an example today, uh, Pattonburg ambulance didn't handle one of our calls, but it was staffed by our people. You know, so it's, that whole thing's working.
Do you have room in the bay or if you? Did that be a full or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because right now their fourth ambulance does sit outside, and we're trying to get it inside as quickly as possible.
I just want to commend everybody in the township, uh, Chief, Lisa, Joe Mexi and his crew. Uh, were handling everything over the weekend with the, this, I checked in with everybody every time I checked in, that it needed anything. Maybe it came up, if somebody asked me a question, I'd ask them a question, they already had the answer, they're taking care of it. And, uh, I really appreciate the professionals we have here, uh, working for us to, uh. Really handle these things without even being told, they just know what to do and they do it, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, my wife acknowledged it because I went to work Sunday morning instead of sitting downtown trying, I said, there's something I can do. I said, I checked in, my son, I said, everything worked good.
My son was like, I can just go get it away, I said.
Yeah, that right.
I texted, said, what do I need, anything?
Nope, it was it, right, yep, yep, yep. So everything was good, they, you know, these. Uh, Joe and his crew and the volunteers and everybody did a nice job, yeah.
Even the next day, I saw the road crowd washing the road down and everything, and so, uh, I appreciate everything you did. Okay. Professional reports, Mike Finelli, anything?
A couple little things, um, I see the chap and contracts on later, so we'll deal with that as far as the sewer O M goes. Um. Bailey's Road, we got started on it after last month with the, with budget passing, so, uh, it's underway. The twenty twenty-four DOT grants were submitted before July first deadline, so they're in, we usually hear October, November. Um. And Lisa, I didn't see the rebound wall's not on anywhere else on this.
I thought you were gonna refer on that, yeah.
Very good, okay. If you recall, this is the rebound law at the park. We did a conditional award, I'll call it, um, to the little bidder. If they were able to supply a few contract documents, because they were below the bid threshold or so forth. Well. I, I, I can't tell you how frustrating it's been, the bottom line is, they can't provide the, the information, and we didn't get confirmation on that literally till. Maybe Tuesday, maybe even yesterday, so. We need to start over, I'll start over in a sense, we need to repit it. Um. And, and you know, what we, what we learned too is that maybe we're not going to deal with the, with the, with the turf areas for stores, we're just gonna build. Okay, however. If you remember, there were three bids received, two were well over the bid threshold, and then that's our Q P A bid threshold of forty thousand. And then you had Dalco that came in at twenty-three or so. So. I, I think it may be optimistic to think that we're gonna get a bid under forty. Uh, that doesn't mean we have to award it, but what it does mean is we, we really need to go out to bid a conventional public bid. Because if, if we get two or four or ten bids in, and they're all over forty, we can't, we, we can't accept them at that point anyway, because it wasn't bid correctly. So, um, I would recommend, um, I haven't heard anything from open space leases, obviously they want this to continue, I, right? I mean, there's no.
They were very shocked by those numbers, so.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I haven't talked, yeah, those numbers are, is it really worth it?
Well.
And I mean, I don't know if that, the conversation needs.
When this thing is done, when you look at it, you're gonna say, I can't believe there's this much conversation, discussion, then.
Well, I can't believe, yeah, right, I can't, yeah, for a, forty thousand for a six-foot.
Yeah, I hear you, I.
I, you know, so.
It's the bid, the bid, especially the one.
Well, so we, we, we have to pre-put it out, so maybe this month we have a conversation with them to determine, dude, folks, is this really what you want to spend? Forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. You know, and maybe that conversation needs to be had.
Maybe you can send Ryan an email tomorrow about it or something. Really have it.
Okay, cause I gotta tell you.
You want to do it, right?
No. I, I'm not thinking, you can bring it up next one. Forty-five thousand dollars for a six-foot concrete wall, I'm like, no.
I.
That's an awful lot.
I, I, I won't comment.
Well, you're a law, fully recommending it.
And it's up to the.
Right, right, it's up to the other committee, right, 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 exactly, we'll meet August second.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
No, right, right.
Cause the last three months we haven't been.
Right.
So.
All right, so we'll talk about it next month then, and Bill will have some information from next, uh, the open space meeting, okay? Perfect, very good, all right. Um, and that would, oh, and, uh, last thing, I did get together with Joe Mexi. Regarding the road damage that the town had from the storm, and. I can say with a hundred percent honesty and sincerity, we did good. There's some, there's some towns, uh, right next to us, like our, our next door neighbors. That really got nailed and have hundreds of thousands of dollars of road repairs.
And months of need for being.
So, uh, there was a problem at Dumont and Adams at that intersection, I met Joe the other day, we took him out, blah, blah, blah. And we sent the estimate to the DOT, um, for reimbursement. Um, that's, that's the way that's going as far as from the roadway infrastructure standpoint. So that was submitted and it was forty-two thousand dollars, I think was, which really isn't that bad. Some of the other estimates we've gone in our office, so, uh, but yeah, that, that was submitted and, uh, we'll see how that plays out, I'm not sure, you know. We're talking DOT funds, we're talking New Jersey emergency funds, we're talking FEMA funds or where the, the, you know, the mechanism's gonna be to pay for it, but. So, and that would, uh, I can conclude my report for today.
Okay, one question for you, Mike.
Sure.
Dumont. What's behind it? What's that shovel down in the ground?
Oh, no, no, I, something was talking about Dumont, when you said Dumont.
Oh, okay.
Uh, no, I got you, the other, the other side.
The Willows.
I, yeah, I got you, I understand, I got you, Bill, um. I don't know, I have not heard boo from our friends at Ingraham and.
I can provide an update that they actually.
I'd love to hear, go ahead.
They, they dropped off, um, the actual zoning clearance permits, uh, for Jeff. Um, and he wanted to correspond with, you know, John and potentially with Mike. To make sure that what they just submitted to him for zoning clearance is accurate as to what they got approval for at the land use board. So once that's confirmed, he can sign those permits and then they can go to state construction code and get the building permits.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, there was a little email just the other day about that, um. What? Did they submit, Lisa, design plans?
No, nothing like that.
Oh, they didn't submit the sign, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, well. They, they need to submit, I mean, the plans are signed, so, okay.
My labor. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. No, I got, Mike, one question for Mike, uh, Lori Cecil was here tonight and I was having, going around having a conversation that I think you probably had with her too. And she just asked me if Mike could send her office a little note about getting Interstate seventy-eight signs to the left. Down at the beginning of County Route six thirty-eight. Where comes Warren Glen Bloomsbury Road.
What, what, what is this thing called, so clear here?
My stepping stone. All right.
Well, okay.
Interstate seventy-eight signs to the left, you know, we discussed the possible positioning, be it on the.
Yeah.
Weight limit ahead sign or the county road sign previous to that. Um, not that their GPS is taking them straight that way, but we thought maybe some signage that said seventy-eight is to the left.
There's. Okay, all right, okay, now I got you.
Five nineteen or six thirty. Right. Six thirty-nine. Six thirty-nine, right, yeah, yeah. So, again, not that it's gonna be the cure-all of all, but if a third of those guys say, well, my GPS is straight, but the sign says left. Maybe they'll move on left.
Well, you would think there are a few on Wood, right?
Yeah, a few, okay, okay. Happy to eliminate a few.
What did she want from me, just a quick little, the little.
Little.
Or some, right, okay.
So, yeah.
She said, from your office, right?
Speaking of which, Mike, while we're on that, lately. I'm starting to see a lot of these trucks are from pretty large companies like ESYS, System Freight. Uh. Was it CR England? Is there anyone we could hold the companies accountable to, not just the driver? Is there anyone we could hold the companies accountable to, not just the driver?
I just want to add that I've never.
Excuse me, you can't.
Estes is the worst.
I agree.
You just can't tell them.
Yeah, I mean, if the, I, I assume those trucks are owned by that company or the person driving them, so I'm sure that there's something we could do.
Yeah, cause, I mean, the independents, they're hard, you know, they're gonna do to them, but these companies. I do have to admit, CR England, we called them about a year ago, and that guy said he would take care of it, and I haven't seen him for a long time. But they're back. And, uh, System Freight, we didn't see for a while either, then Sergeant McLaughlin or somebody speak with them there and is the System Freight out there?
Uh, um, I don't think it's out when I, I came.
I didn't see them for a while. I've seen them, the other day, I remember the guy who's driving, he had an empty box. He was flying, I mean, he, he stopped, but he got through the one seventy-three intersection really quick, like he downshifted, got to the stop sign and he's back in gear, went across Maple pretty fast, to Warren Glen Road. I don't even know if he stopped there, but he, he was hauling, and about thirty minutes later, same driver came back. And he still had to be empty, because he was still going pretty fast, I don't know where he went, what he did, but, uh, but I, I thought that's the company that's down along the river in Holland. Get the red trucks, red tractors, I think it's System Freight.
That's, uh, Georgia Pacific calling down there, you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not a Georgia Pacific truck. I thought System Freight will haul out there too, so we talked about it in one time, but can we look into maybe like if we're gonna give a summons to the driver or whatever? Or, I mean, if it's a large truck like that, I mean, we put cameras up and issue the company a something without identifying the driver.
I am certain there's something that we can come up with, and then if we file something against them here, they're gonna have, now have to come to our court to dispute it.
Right.
Right, and then that becomes, otherwise running up with judgments against them, which then could be transcribed in other jurisdictions, so I will definitely.
And on the same subject.
Oh, yeah, well, some of them are empty, so when they're empty, I don't think you're doing anything about it, but that's the problem.
But, um, Lori Cisla and the one representative from Doug Steinhardt's office said that they are trying to write legislation to mandate that the trucks all have the higher end GPS. That, and without it, you know, they'll also be, be able to write a ticket or a citation for that. So they said they are currently working on that also.
Yeah, that's the other thing I wanted, can you, for next month, check with the court? And see how many of these truck tickets are actually paid, so my, my suspicion is that some of these independents probably. That's my suspicion, I don't know if it's true, but.
I know I have a trial next month for one, we don't get a lot of trials.
That's arguing it?
Yeah.
Anyway, oh, anybody else? Mike, you don't have any for.
No, just executing.
Anybody, anybody have anything on their old business? New business. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty-four twenty-three, which is in February, a calendar raffle for the Shorewood Society. Resolution fifty-five point three awarding the contract to Chapman. Uh, do you want me to pull that one, Mike, and se- discuss it separately, Chapman?
No, no, that was a follow-up from my spot, if you remember, and so then Brent and everybody, we got it straightened out.
Number fifty-five point three award of contract Chapman for the shore maintenance. Uh, resolution fifty-six twenty-three, on premise fifty-fifty raffle for the Greenwich Emergency Squad. Resolution fifty-seven twenty-three, on premise drill raffle for the Greenwich Township Emergency Squad. I, I take the motion for those at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody have any questions, comments, discussion on those, roll call? Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty-two twenty-three, stop school violence grant, resolution fifty-nine twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three clean communities grant. Resolution sixty twenty-three, body worn camera grant, those are all, uh, resolutions to bring those grants into the pocket for that year. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Well, all of them, roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott, yes.
Looking for a motion, or I'll make the motion for resolution sixty-one twenty-three, extension of third quarter property tax base period. I think that's to August twenty-eighth, am I having correct? I'll make the motion. Any questions, comments?
Uh, can we get a letter out with the new tax bill since it's probably the highest that we've done in a very long time, between the school and. Uh, and also, I think the residents need to know about tax relief between the, um, like we discussed.
That's already in, we're already, they, they already got that ready to go.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
The letter, uh, what kind of letter you wanna do, what do you want?
I don't know. But we kind of explain to them what, you know.
No way you're gonna cover it all in one letter?
I know, but.
They can call the clerk. Well, that's what the August third meeting will be about.
I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution sixty-two twenty-three and sixty-three twenty-three, post lien redemptions, uh, for that package, is anybody gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, any questions, comments, roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah. I'd like to open it up, I'd make a motion over public, uh, hearing on ordinance number one oh two twenty twenty-three, which is a Comcast municipal consent. For Comcast, uh, cable, everyone a second?
I'll second.
Podium's open for anybody who'd like to come up and make a comment, only regarding the Comcast municipal consent ordinance. Anybody wishing to make any comments? Thinking I'll make a motion with close public hearing? Wait a second.
Second.
All favor? Looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance number one oh two twenty twenty-three, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm second, any questions, comments? Roll call?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah. I'm looking, um, looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh six twenty twenty-three, which is the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make it.
Everybody want a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Just a beam?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Just the firm, yes.
Motion to introduce ordinance number one oh seven twenty twenty-three, which is fire department fee awareness. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Rock second, questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes. Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh eight twenty twenty-three, weight limit, weight limit awareness for the roads.
Sorry, Mayor, there, there's a typo in there, we have four ton, which is our municipal ordinance regulation, but it should be ten. So in two spots, it should be four, it's gonna be ten, uh, cause they're the two county roads.
Where's that, Mike?
Um, see, we were gonna add this to our list of prohibited roads, which are all, the municipals are all four tons, the counties are ten tons. So the county resolution said we can enforce for ten tons, not four, so.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, this is a county road, but we, it, it becomes eight ton at Dumont.
Yeah, well, then they.
And then where was the other one, it's only four ton?
No. All of ours are four.
Four, right.
Yeah, so since this is a county road, they passed a resolution allowing us to write tickets on their road, so then that way the police can write it on North and South Main Street. But the ordinance that we have drafted has the four tons, the county resolution said ten ton.
Ten ton.
So we just, it's amended to have that in there, we're fine.
I have a motion from Lori.
I think both, I can.
Okay.
But, or no, I think I said I gladly second it. Uh, do we have to make, amend the motion to, with those corrections?
Yeah, just as long as Lori's willing to, I'm, Lori, you're, Miss McDermott's willing to do that.
I'll still gladly second.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott?
Yeah. Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh nine twenty twenty-three roadside solicitation. Anybody wanna make that motion? I'll make the motion, anybody want a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions, comment, discussion?
I'm, I'm missing that one, which one is that?
For the, the, what?
Oh, right, that, oh, that's the county, right, to the right, right, yes.
Roll call?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott? Yes.
I don't know, I don't see that on the list, did you call it? Nope. Did you only add sixty-four twenty-three?
That was in our packet.
That's for the affordable housing, for, oh, that's the turnover.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I did need to add that to your little, uh, your notes. It did go through, uh, with Mike, Mike Sullivan and John Drell's office, so he, he added some language. If Mike is okay with it, you got that email, then we're ready to.
Ready for that.
Yes.
So looking for a motion to adopt resolution sixty-four twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna make it. I'll second it then. Any questions, comments, discussion? What is that, what are we basically doing, are we turning the land over there?
So, normally I would, but John's handled this thing from the beginning, so it just seems quicker and cheaper to just have his office do it, so he agreed.
We should turn the land over, right, much to, that we had aside for affordable housing, I just really wanted to be better aware. Okay, uh, roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
We're done discussing the baseball field, right, my school?
Yeah.
I'm gonna take care of that. Oh, do we just wanna appoint Dale Steffler?
Uh, the panic?
Yes, I'll make that motion to appoint Dale Steffler to the Open Space Committee.
I'll second.
I'll, yeah, I'll make them, I'll, yeah, I'll make the appointment based on the roll call.
Okay.
Uh, we've got a motion for support.
You said it?
Yeah. Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Burson?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
New facility update, got, we got under, with the reports, right? Well, I think what the chief was saying is, I spoke to Commissioner Cisla over the issues, the last beginning one was we were under the impression we had to have a traffic survey done, but after I explained to him what we were doing, moving up the road, as long as it was less than two hundred and fifty-five or two hundred and ninety-five cars, particular traffic a day, they call them something else. We didn't need to do the traffic study, all we needed was a certification from the engineer stating that it won't increase the, uh, not, the building engineer. So, that was done. And we, we met all their other conditions, so as far as I know, we should be good to go by, at least by September, latest by September to go off the beds. Fire hydrant, we got the updated ready, right?
Yes.
And I guess looking for a motion to waive the fees for the Greenwich Emergency Squad for the pavilion use, that's where you're October fest, I said.
That is correct.
I'll make that motion. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Uh, Mayor Burson?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
About along the same lines, we've got a late, uh, submission from the elementary school, um, did you wanna take that, Bill?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, see, I don't want, the superintendent wants to have, uh, a little picnic out there and, what's it, August twenty-first, something like that?
Yeah, it's a Monday from twelve to three, I believe.
You know, uh, I know you, did you get everything you needed from me today?
I did, so if, if we could have a, if it's okay with the governing body for them to not only be there, uh, to waive the fees and also to allow them to have a, uh, like a skillet grill to make hot dogs and hamburgers.
Oh, you can see a bar.
Because apparently it's not permitted, so.
You'd have to see Paul in October for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, any questions?
And that's the way you give the fee, right?
Yeah, 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 I mean, we're always gonna waive the fee for school, I mean, whether it's tax or money, to take the tax per your money, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
You know, so, roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes. Okay, uh, very discussed the weight limits. There have been, you have a discussion on this, uh, on the correspondence, telling us not only that I wanted Lisa to add, I don't know, you did put it in the packet, right, cause it was in mine. We, we got a letter from Alpha about putting in a bid for, uh, police services right there, but I didn't wanna uh, put a technical session after public comment. Um, looking for a motion to go to, uh, open public comment, anybody want a second?
I'll make it.
Uh, second, yeah.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up to the podium, just state your name, address, and you have three minutes to make your comment.
Name, address, um.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Agatha Applesey, I live at three fifty-five Prospect Street. And I would like to know if we can get help with, uh, one of our neighbors at, uh, seven or nine Beacon Street, that neighbor has a, um, what's it called? Subtlety, thank you, a subtlety that has been, uh, leaking since we moved, moved, uh, a little bit more than a year ago. And as far as I know, a couple of neighbors have, uh, contacted, sort of, numerous departments and tried to get help with it, but it's not really moving along. It is close to our well, so it could affect our drinking water, so I'd like to know if we can have something.
After we flew, closed public comment, then we'll give you an answer to that, okay?
That's it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, uh, thank you so much, Mayor, and everybody else, uh, I have a hundred eighty seconds, so I'm gonna split them up into two forms, number one, I have a couple of questions as far as how much time will I have to discuss why I'm here? And if it's only three minutes, um, is it only three minutes?
Yes, it's comments, not discussion, comments.
Okay, um, no problem, at what point would I be able to discuss?
So you did, did you give your name and address yet?
No, my name is Daniel Reese's, um, my address is eleven ninety-three, Route twenty-two West, the old Sammy's Ice Cream.
Okay.
You know, um, trying to start a business in that location and, uh, it requires an actual discussion with the ju- the human beings that are in this room. Maybe about five, ten minutes, if you want me to wait until the end of this, then I can, if you would like for me to not start and use this competency start.
We can use you three minutes, but you guys speak up a little bit, I have a hard time hearing.
Was the microphone on? Is that on, Lisa? So why am I standing?
That's really hard to do this thing.
It's much easier, okay, so, couple of things that I just wanna say, number one, uh, I wanna commend the chief and the police department. I've been in this town for maybe less than a year, we've had four police incidences, all four times the police department showed up immediately. Their bedside manners or their.
Can you stay back towards the podium, please?
Their courtesy has been unparalleled to any of the other officers that I've seen in the Lehigh Valley, had a lot of interaction, uh, with law enforcement, because it's my own job. And, uh, there's a couple of things I wanna say, the chief very clearly said that there was about twelve hundred and forty-five calls with twenty-nine arrests, that's a point zero two percent ratio. If you look at the statistics, that's one of the lowest in the state, that means you have one of the most, um, smartest police forces imaginable. You can't have that and have them issuing tickets to trucks non-stop at the same time. When the officers pull the trucks over, there is actual human element that's involved. I do agree that Estes is a horrible corporation, but I do agree that litigation is the way to go. But putting the pressure on the police officers, and I understand that my public comment is that public comment, because I'm sure that what you want me to do is sell you my business. That you have no interest in approving at this time, or do you have any interest in actually hearing the facts of how difficult it is to run the business where it started in your township? But I will tell you that the police department that you have is a treasure, it's a gold mine. If you choose to enact more restrictions and force the chief over here to make them write more tickets, you will lose the brilliance of your police department. There's very few police departments that have the ability to articulate themselves and have a point zero two percent police arrest to response ratio. This is, that you have basically psychologist level men with a badge and a gun showing up and mitigating instances. Not throwing citizens in handcuffs, not adding more arrests that would not add to the budget. Uh, the tickets that are required to be cut to the trucks on the spot are very expensive. The gentlemen that are driving the trucks are family men, they don't own the billion dollar corporations like Estes. If you do wanna combat the problem, you have to combat it at the root, which is the geographical location of both the warehouses and the corporations that are like Chick-fil-A and Starbucks that receive nonsensical amount of supplies. Starbucks across the street generates nine million dollars in revenue, I wanna generate half of that and fund whatever deficiencies your police department has personally, by myself. Uh, my location across the street, I don't only own the land, I also own the brand, as well as all the equipment, everything you can imagine. I would like to be the third person offering fifty thousand dollars as a donation to the police department to build their new police station. What I heard today was that they have the capacity to literally flood the whole police station. So like, you know, with all due respect, what's the plan next, to put the police department in the library attic temporarily? Unfortunately, I actually own real estate in this land, so I'm gonna actually do something about it. So, I'm gonna give you guys two options, option one is support me in my quest to fund the police department to raise money for your town and end the nonsensical truck traffic. Which are the two issues that were identified in this meeting, where option two is block me. Block me, you can block me by, uh, pushing the no truck, uh, no food truck, as if I wanna put a food truck on your property. It is my property, I wanna build it up, I wanna wrap it up, I wanna end it, I just want to be heard It is my property, I wanna build it up, I wanna wrap it up, I wanna end it, I just want to be heard in a form where it gives you a chance to digest what I just said, I've said a lot. So, I'm gonna take a break, and if, Mayor, if you allow me to speak at the end, I would like to sit, if I will not be allowed to speak, out of respect, I will still sit and listen.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you have an answer for the questions, sir? Will I be allowed to speak?
It's public comment, so everybody gets to speak.
Oh, I didn't, I, I didn't see anyone else. Okay, anybody else? Uh, looking for a motion to close public, I'll make it, anybody want a second? All favor?
Aye.
Um, first question, where are we standing with the people in the back of that, that seven oh nine beacon, as far as?
That's that house with the four apartments in it, yeah.
We had to discuss that executive, yeah, okay. All I can tell you is that's on our radar, we are trying to address it, there's illegal is, issues with it, we're well aware of it, county health departments involve. It's not unnoticed to us, but I guess we're doing everything legally at this point we can, and we hear you.
Okay, and do you have like, like?
Well, this, I, go ahead.
I can, I can call, yeah.
After?
Yeah.
I don't know how this goes.
Yeah, I understand, and most people don't get it, and they kinda.
Okay, and, do they have anything to say for the second part of that?
I, okay, the second part, uh, well, well, first, public comment is just that, public comment. And it's very hard when you guys ask us questions for us to keep our mouths shut, cause we wanna have a dialogue, but we can't, cause it's public comment. After that, this will be getting our chance to talk. But, sir, your situation, I believe this income be forced, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a zoning issue or.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
No, don't.
It's not a zoning issue, it's a conversation.
But you're not allowed to talk.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh.
Okay.
So, I.
I have no idea what you're talking about, when you started talking about zoning, trying to block you, I have no clue what you're talking about. Uh, I appreciate your offer, though, with the help of the police department, I don't know if that's all legal, I guess.
Yeah, no.
But, I, and I.
It's a nice gesture.
I appreciate your educating us on, uh, law enforcement and, and complimenting our police department. As far as the other stuff you said, I have no clue what you're talking about, quite frankly.